For some comments and also Ms. Bonham.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to thank everyone for coming out this evening. This is a great crowd. To the parents, we appreciate you lending your children to us for this evening. We've done these in the past and we never had this many to participate, so everyone's to be commended for that. The process and the procedure, what we would do is that, for the most part, the students will conduct the meeting. Every once in a while, we will have to interrupt them so that we can, if we have to take a vote on something, then the council will have to vote on it to make it legal. But outside of that, we will sit back and we will let them do what we do every second and fourth Tuesday of the month. And we're looking for a great time. And again, we'd like to thank you, ladies and gentlemen, parents, grandparents, cousins, aunts, uncles, for coming out and participating with us for this because we're just, we're excited. And I'm really excited because this was a labor of love for myself and the principal of MIS. She was the one that approached me about doing it. And I said yes, and we started the ball rolling. And I'd also like to thank Linda Rosa, I administrative assistant, for all of her labor of love as she put everything together for the students. So at this time, I'm going to bring Ms. Bonham up so she can say a few words because she was very instrumental in getting this thing done for us.
First of all, I'd like to thank the town of Maryville. It's an honor for our students to be here and to participate in Municipal Day. This is going to be a great learning experience and will impact their lives forever. And they were so excited. Just so that you know what the process was, they did have to fill out an application. They had to write an essay, and I know Trinity is going to share her essay tonight, about what they would do if they ran the town of Maryville and what changes they would make. And so they wrote wonderful essays. It was very hard to pick our president. But we are so excited to be here and to thank you and to allow us to participate in this. Parents, thank you so much for being here. Without your support, your encouragement, and your teamwork, your child would not be here. So let's give a round of applause to our parents. And I'd like to thank our, we have a couple of school board members here tonight, Ms. Thomas and Ms. Dunlap. So thank you so much for being here also and participating in this. And to our students, make us proud, all right? Good luck.
At this time, I would like to pass my gavel to Trinity Thomas, who will be our president tonight.
I would like to call to order the meeting of the Maryville Town Council today, Tuesday, May 10th, 2022. Maryville, my town. Hi, my name is Trinity Thomas. And if I was elected to town council and could run the town of Maryville, these are a few things I would do. First, I would get the town to work together with the school and our community gardens to help the less fortunate. And I would also add more stores to add more resources to our community. And I would also want more opportunities for some more jobs for the children of the community. And I will also keep, and I would also keep the town clean. And I want to have community cleanup days. Second, some changes or improvements I would make to the town would be fixing streets that are in need of repair. And to make Maryville safer, I would add a curfew so people aren't out late. And I would also work to make more parks for kids of all abilities. And I also plant more trees for better breathing. Third, some programs I would start or continue would be having more clubs, like Girls on the Run Cup in schools. And I would also add more sports programs like swimming. And at the community center, I would add more arts and crafts programs. And I would also add jungle gyms so kids can be more active and healthy. Fourth, I would make the town a great place to live by helping people with no place to live. And I would donate food and money to homeless shelters. And I would also add a place for people to get fresh clothes and towels and things they need every day for free. I would also add more parks just to walk through and I would make sure each and every person in the community is treated fairly. Lastly, the way I would impact our town to be the best town in the state of Indiana would be to encourage active community involvement from each town member. And I would also reduce pollution to ensure better health among community members. And I would make sure the community is safe and protected. In conclusion, I would hope to make the town and community better by adding all the things listed above. I love the town I live in. I'm working to add my ideas and make living here better than it already is. Trinity Thomas for town council. Please rise for the invocation and then remain standing for a moment of silence.
I would like to, I would like to start off by asking Jesus to please bless everyone who is here tonight. Heavenly Father, please help our first responders have the courage and strength to keep our community safe. Please bring our firemen, police officer, and paramedics home to their families. Please bless our schools, staff, and children to have an open mind and ready to learn, to, wait, to stay safe, sorry, to help keep them stay focused. Heavenly Father, please bless our councilmen and women with the knowledge to keep our town, our town a safe place to live. Heavenly Father, please help the families who are in need of housing, food, clothing, and medical with an amazing blessing. May no one go without basic needs. Heavenly Father, please watch over our military men and women to, so they can't come home to their families. Heavenly Father, please bless and watch over our hospital and medical people that keep us safe and healthy. May our children find a way to come together, united as one another. God, in God we trust. Amen.
Please rise for the, oh, please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
By Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll call.
Councilwoman Nyla James.
Present.
Vice President Ezra Lopez.
Here.
Councilwoman Nassir Watkins.
Present.
Councilwoman Pari Patel.
Present.
Councilwoman Trinity Thomas.
Present.
Councilwoman Amanda Hubbard.
Present.
Councilwoman Samira Nadomi.
Present.
Council, or town manager Prince Patel.
Here.
Building director Gwyneth Felker.
Here.
Planning director Michael Walls II.
Here.
Police chief Brandon Rush.
Here.
Parks director Terrence Harvey.
Here and present.
Fire chief Herbert Campbell.
Here.
Code enforcement director Rayelle Morton.
Present.
Town attorney Mariah Hayes.
Here.
Stormwater director Daniel Martinez.
You.
Public works director Haley Carter.
Here.
Economic development director Summer Wallace.
Here.
Human resource director Tyran Todd.
Here.
Town judge Malachi Whitlow.
Here.
For the council, Councilman Spann. Vice President Hardaway.
Here.
Councilman Minchuck.
Here.
Councilwoman Uselak. Councilman Pettit. Councilman. Councilman White.
Here.
And President Bella.
Here.
We have seven present.
Petitions, communications, acknowledgement, and run administrations. Tonight, we are honored to welcome a new Maryville police officer, Judge Velasco, Chief Cutino, and police commissioners. Please come forward at this time.
Not that I need to mic, but I just want to welcome you to this. Thanks. All right. Welcome you to the Maryville, what normally would be the normal Maryville town court and also the council eating room. And I'm very pleased to see the diversity of our town. I've been here for forty-six years. So welcome all. Okay. My substitute judge Malachi Whitlow is right here and will be assisting me in conducting this oath to Officer. Is that like singing karaoke? We just want to hear you. All right. Want to hear you good. Okay, so Officer Gold, would you please repeat after me? Aye.
Aye.
State your name.
Nicholas Gold.
Salamely swear.
Salamely swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the state of Indiana.
And the Constitution of the state of Indiana.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And honestly.
And honestly.
Discharge my duties.
Discharge my duties.
As a police officer of the Maryville Police Department.
As a police officer of the Maryville Police Department.
For the town of Maryville, Indiana.
For the town of Maryville, Indiana.
According to law.
According to law.
Do the best of my skill and ability.
Do the best of my skill and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Yes, good evening. This is Officer Nicholas Gold. Nicholas spent four years with the Hammond Police Department. He also spent eleven years with the Chicago Police Department. He's married, he has three kids, one daughter, two sons. And if his name sounds familiar as Gold, anybody remember the field goal kicker with the Chicago Bulls? Well, they're not related. So we'd like to welcome badge number four twenty-three, Nicholas Gold.
Consent agenda, account. Payable register voucher approval for May tenth, 2022. Approval of town council leading minutes of April twenty-sixth, 2022. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Councilman Spann.
Present. Yes.
Vice President Hardaway.
Yes.
Councilman Minchuck.
Yes.
Councilwoman Uselak.
Yes.
Councilman Pettit.
Yes.
Councilman White.
Yes.
President Bella.
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Announce each committee name and call the chair, on the chairperson to give the report.
We.
Budget and finance, Chairman, Mr. Lopez. Members, Ms. Hubbard, Mr. Watkins.
We want to encourage residents and businesses that were impacted by the pandemic to apply for a grant to assist them in any repairs needed to go to the outside of their resident or business. The grants are matching up to five thousand dollars for residents and ten thousand dollars for a business. Please review the grant application to answer any questions that you may have or contact the grant administrator. That concludes my report.
Council affairs, Chairwoman, Mrs. Hubbard. Members, Mr. Watkins, Ms. Patel.
The committee met last Tuesday to discuss the revising of the town council bylaws. Town attorneys will make the recommended changes and present them at the next committee meeting Tuesday, May seventeenth, at five thirty.
Public works and utilities, Chairman, Mr. Watkins. Members, Ms. James, Ms. Patel.
Public works, the public works department is looking forward to the spring, summer seasons here on our town. They will continue to upkeep our streets, continue cleanup programs, and help keep our town looking good.
Elections, public relations, town beautification. Chairwoman, Mrs. Hubbard. Members, Mr. Lopez, Mr. Watkins.
There is no report.
Environmental affairs, Chairwoman, Ms. Ndamie. Members, Ms. James, Ms. Uselak.
Program information for the environmental mobile and field trips for summer twenty-two and the twenty-three school year is now available on the Lake County Solid Waste website. They will be offering in-person programs for summer twenty-two. It is their hope that new field trip space will be ready for in-person field trips in the fall. If not, their educators will come to you. Registration opens on April twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two. Also, the management office is now located in Maryville at eighty-six ninety-five Broadway, and they are looking forward to reopening the Environmental Education Center and Reuse Room this summer.
Personal policy and employee benefits, Chairman, Mr. Lopez. Members, Ms. Patel, Mrs. Hubbard.
We are still looking for high school seniors and college students to work throughout the town this summer. Please contact the human relations department.
Public safety, Chairman, Mr. Watkins. Members, Ms. James, Ms. Patel.
Our police and fire departments continue to work hard and around the clock to keep us safe and provide public service to all. We are still in early plans to future South Station to provide better services.
I want to add to it. As of May eighth, there have been nine hundred sixty cases of COVID since April twenty-fifth in Lake County. There have been one hundred eight thousand cases in total and one thousand eight hundred twenty-six deaths so far. There were zero new cases reported on May ninth.
Economic development, Chairwoman, Mrs. Hubbard. Members, Mr. Lopez, Mr. Watkins, Dean Patana, Jennifer Duffin.
The development commission met prior to this meeting to begin the process of creating a special sub-election area for the new silos at Sanders Farm within the Mississippi Street TIF area.
Parks and recreation, Chairwoman, Ms. Patel. Members, Mr. Watkins, Mrs. Hubbard.
Cleanup and mowing have started all the towns' trails and parks. Torrance, we have a booking on July twenty-third for a children's party at Rosenbaum, at Rosenbaum Park. We have. All parks have been rehabbed for the summer. Thank you.
Abandoned brided properties, Chairman, Mr. Lopez. Members, Rayelle Morton, Adrea Briclaw Kasani.
No report at this time, Ms. President.
Dean and Barbara Wright Community Center, Chairman, Mr. Hubbard. Members, Mrs. Ndamie, Mr. Watkins.
The center will be hosting the Midwest Championship Valley Tournament on Saturday and Sunday, May fourteenth and fifteenth. Over one thousand players are expected to participate.
Special projects, F and B Tax Diversity Fourth of July Celebration. Chairman, Mr. Lopez. Members, Mrs. Hubbard, Mrs. Ndamie.
We, we will have a Juneteenth celebration, June eighteenth, from noon to five P M. at the Dean and Barbara White Community Center. There will be a live, there will be live music, a DJ, vendors, bouncy houses, and children's games. Vendor applications are still available. Our fireworks will be on July third. We are still in the planning stages. More information will be forthcoming. The Fourth of July parade will start at one thirty P M. from the Dean and Barbara White Community Center. Entry forms are still available at this town, at any town office.
Mr. Lopez, when will the Fourth of July parade actually take place? When will the parade take place? The Fourth of July parade, when will the parade take place?
Fourth of July.
Thank you so much.
Lake County Solid Waste Management, Mrs. Ndamie. Northern Indiana Regional Planning Commission.
No report at this time.
Northern Indiana Regional Planning Commission, Mr. Lopez.
No report. Our next meeting is in June.
Stormwater Management Resources, Dr. Daniel Martinez.
The Maryville, the Maryville Stormwater Activity is busy with many projects to control flooding and improving the environment. Many are on the north side of town, including Muddale, Georgia Heights, and Independent Hill subdivision. We also had an audit scheduled with I D E M N S M O. Thank you.
South Shore Visitors and Convention Authority, Ms. Patel, Mr. Patel.
Special meetings were held on Monday, April twenty-fifth to interview the two top candidates for the position of president or C E O and to select the president and C E O. The candidate selected was current point mayor David Erin. Mr. Erin is scheduled to start his job next month. Thank you.
Fire Territory Board, Mr. Watkins, Mrs. James.
Chief Yerga applied for two grants through the Federal Emergency Management Agency. The first one is for self-contained breathing apparatuses, and the second one is for a new fire safety trailer for the education of fire safety and prevention.
Town Court, Malachi Whitlow.
No report at this time.
Department reports, Town Manager, Department Directors, Mr. Patel.
Public work. Public Works Staff Report. The Public Work Department started their branch pickup program on May second, starting on the north end of town, moving south. The branch program runs through September thirtieth. Branches can also be dropped off at our North Barn located at fifty-seven fifty Tyler Street, Monday through Friday from seven fifteen A M. to two forty-five P M. A pre-construction meeting for our Broadway, which is located east side, sidewalks projects as held on May fifth, and constructions will begin soon. Milestone is working on the punch list from the twenty-twenty-one paving program, which includes restoration works and other miscellaneous items that need to be addressed.
Police Department, Stormwater.
My name is Brandon Rush. The police department's April stats are as follows. We had two thousand five hundred and seventy, seventy-two calls for service, one hundred and thirty-one stat, state accident reports, and two hundred and three false alarms. We would also like to announce that our adopted cop program with the Maryville Police Schools has been up and running for now a month, for a couple of months now. We have six officers in this program, one in each elementary school and one in the intermediate school. The program is showing great success.
Stormwater.
Stormwater?
He already went.
Already did, okay. Thank you.
Parks.
The Dean and Barbara Wright Community Center just hosted a successful wrestling event. This past weekend, the center, this past weekend, the center is excited to host a Maryville Intermediate School Parent Research Fair on May twelfth, where we will have a table and share all the programs and activities that will be a bale, a bale about this summer. Parks and Recreation are maintaining the parks and working around the weather, whether to keep all the grass cut along with the inspecting playground equipment.
Planning and building.
Building and a planning. Go ahead.
My name is Michael Walls II from the Planning Department. The Maryville Board of Zoning Appeals met April twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-two, at six thirty P M. The board heard the following petitions. Millions of user approval to allow a L E D sign, special except, exception approval to allow a restroom bar and grill, special exception approval to allow classroom and office additions to a school, and special exception approval to allow a medical training school. The Maryville Town Council will consider these petitions this evening.
As of April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two, construction activity for this year includes the following: sixteen single-family permits, one duplex permit, eighty-four commercial permits, and two hundred and thirty-three miscellaneous improvements, improvement permits, for a total of three hundred and thirty-four permits. Total permit fees are one hundred and ten thousand, seven hundred and twenty-four dollars and forty cents. And total cost of improvements are thirteen million, nine hundred and eighty-one thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars.
H R.
Hi, my name is Tyron Todd, and the Human Resources Department has been posting job openings, interviewing, hiring, and trading new employees. Last month, we submitted a revised employee manual to the town attorney for review. We hope to be following the new manual very soon.
Economic Development.
Hi, my name is Summer Wallace. The goal of economic development is to create more jobs in Maryville. The job fair will be held July twenty-first. Applications are available on the town website.
Fire Department.
Hello, my name is Herbert Campbell. The year-end service calls from the last year were two thousand seven hundred and forty. For the fire service calls, it's seven thousand five hundred. For the ambulance service calls, this was an increase of one hundred and thirty-seven. For the fire service calls and nine hundred ambulance service calls from the previous year.
Code Enforcement.
My name is Rayo Morton. For April, we had th- three hundred eighty-seven duties performed. Grass height has started to reach eight inches, and we have issued twenty-three grass warnings as of the fifth of May.
Does that complete the department reports?
Town Administration, Ted Admin- Administration and members of the planning and building and econ- economic developments have met with it and talked to the planning consultants regarding the new Maryville Comprehensive Plan. We will be circulating a draft copy of a request for proposals to the ca- Town Council. We're receiving a lot of calls from companies and real estate brokers asking about properties in Maryville to invest in. They've read about Amazon, Midwest Trucks and Auto, and Big Lots coming to the town, as well as the new residential products, projects on Taft and Woodcomb Streets. Maryville, Maryville will be holding an annual job fair on Thursday, July twenty-first, eleven A M. to three P M. At the Dean and Barbara White Community Center. Contact Linda Ross at two one nine seven six nine five seven double one, E X P three oh three, or Joanna Gordiolo, Gordiolo, at two one nine seven six nine five seven double one. Thank you.
Legal Department.
My name is Mariah Hayes, and I am the Town Attorney for the town of Maryville, Indiana. I currently represent the Town Council Board of Zoning Appeals, Plan Commission, Economic Development Commission, and Redevelopment Commission. The town seeks our opinion to better prepare and evaluate all of their options and often minimize the likelihood of disputes. I analyze the situation and provide the best possible position to avoid litigation or liability. I am committed to ensuring that the town has the guidance and advocacy necessary to manage risks and defend claims.
Audiences twenty-two through twelve, discussion and roll call vote. Twenty-two through twelve.
Motion to approve. Second.
Okay, so for this part, we have some legalese to take care of. So, uh, Mr. Pettit, is that your motion to approve this ordinance?
Motion to approve ordinance twenty-two dash twelve, Mr. President.
And Mr. Hardaway is your second stand?
Yes.
Very good.
Open for discussion.
Mr. President, this is a four-point-five acre parcel that the Misner Group is purchasing out at Amerplex. It's the final parcel, uh, that they're acquiring to complete their acquisition. Uh, Marge and Jeff and I heard this at the Plan Commission. Sheila, I think everything's pretty self-explanatory, correct?
Yes.
Audience twenty-two through thirteen. Is there any other discussion? Roll, roll call.
Councilwoman Nyla James.
Present.
Vice President Ezra Lopez.
Present.
Councilwoman Nasir Watkins.
We are, yes.
Uh, Councilwoman Pari Patel.
Yes.
Councilwoman Samir Nadomee.
Yes.
Council President Trinity Thomas.
Present. Aye.
Councilwoman Amanda Hubbard.
Yes. For the council, Councilman Span. Vice President Hardaway.
Yes.
Councilman Minchuk.
Yes.
Councilwoman Usalak.
Yes.
Councilman Pettit.
Yes.
Councilman White.
Yes.
And President Bella.
I vote aye because Trinity said I should.
Seven in favor.
Mr. President, uh, another legalese that I would like to introduce, uh, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules and read it on second reading per the petitioner's request.
Second.
So, motion by Mr. Pettit and a second by Mr. White to suspend the rules to allow us to read this ordinance on second and final reading tonight. Any discussion? Council roll call, please.
Councilman Span. Yes. Vice President Hardaway.
Yes.
Councilman Minchuk.
We are, yes.
Councilwoman Usalak.
Yes.
Councilman Pettit.
Yes.
Councilman White.
Yes.
And President Bella.
Yes. And let the record show that Mr. Span did vote yes through Ms. James. So we have suspended the rules to read this ordinance on second and final reading. Madam Clerk Treasure.
Councilman Span.
Uh, Mr. President, we need a motion. So, on second reading.
An ordinance of the town of Maryville, Indiana, providing that the zoning ordinance town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, be amended by changing the estimate, estimated C dash two community commercial zoning district to C I S commercial and, I'm sorry, industrial special zoning district classification.
Is there a motion to approve?
No move.
Second. Second.
Motion by Mrs. Usalak for approval. Second by Mr. White.
Yes.
We'll recognize Mr. Lopez for a second. Thank you. On ordinance twenty-two dash twelve, this is second and final reading. On second readings, we ask for public comment. Is there any public, public comment tonight on this particular ordinance? Twenty-two dash twelve. We're changing some zoning into an industrial special zoning district. Seeing none. Madam Clerk Treasure, council roll call, please.
Councilman Span. Vice President Hardaway.
Yes.
Councilman Minchuk.
Yes.
Councilwoman Usalak.
Yes.
Councilman Pettit.
Yes.
Councilman White.
Yes.
President Bella.
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Audience twenty-two through thirteen, discussion and roll call vote.
Motion to approve. Twenty-two dash thirteen.
Second.
An ordinance amending town code section twelve dash forty-one established toll relief services fees and repealing all town code sections and ordinances or parts thereof in conflict herewith.
For the record, Mr. Hardaway made the motion to approve twenty-two dash thirteen with a second by Mrs. Usalak. Any discussion by the council? Student council, any questions? Madam Clerk Treasure, roll call.
Councilman Span.
Aye.
Vice President Hardaway.
Yes.
Councilman Minchuk.
Yes.
Councilwoman Usalak.
Yes.
Councilman Pettit.
Yes.
Councilman White.
Yes.
President Bella.
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Resolution twenty-two through eighteen, discussion and voice vote.
Motion to approve.
A motion by Mr. Hardaway with a second by Mr. White for approval of resolution twenty-two dash eighteen. It's a resolution of the town of Maryville authorizing a transfer of monies within the funds of the Park Department. Question on the motion? Terrence, why are we moving all this money around in a Parks Department?
Uh, because people need money, so that's why we're moving money. And the mo- and they're probably moving the money because the money has no place to live.
Okay, okay.
Best answer ever.
So, for, for Terrence Harvey, can you give us some examples of what you need the money for?
Spending it. So we need the money to donate to people who are sick. And to fix the parks.
Well, that's good enough for me. Thank you, Terrence. Any other discussion by the council? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Councilman Span.
Aye.
Vice President Hardaway.
Yes.
Councilman Minchuk.
Yes.
Councilwoman Usalak.
Yes.
Councilman Pettit.
Yes.
Councilman White.
Yes.
President Bella.
Yes.
Seven in favor.
A P voucher register summary for A R P purchases for May tenth, twenty-twenty-two.
Motion to approve, Mr. Lopez will read the amount.
Second.
Two hundred and seventy-six thousand, three hundred and three dollars and fifty cents.
A motion by Mr. Hardaway. Mr. Pettit, second for approval.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Special expectation approval. Ms. Shine.
So on tonight, we have, um, as, um, our planning director alluded to, we have, um, some petitions that will be considered by the council tonight. Our first petition will be Brittany Bynum. Brittany, could you join us at the podium? Brittany Bynum, located at fifty-four seventy-five Broadway, a variance of use approval from section twenty-one dash one eighty-nine eight in a C two community commercial zoning district to allow a L E D sign. Um, uh, petitioners requesting a variance of use approval from Town Council, section twenty-one dash one eighty-nine, to have a L E D sign. The sign will provide and promote healthcare business, the services they provide, hiring needs. The proposed sign is existing and will be replaced with a seven foot, seven and three quarters high by five feet, six and a half wide pitched H D full color outdoor L E D sign. Petitioner will advertise town events when requested.
Motion to approve, Mr. President. Will hear from you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Floor by Mr. Hardaway with a second by Mr. Span. Go ahead, ma'am.
Well, my name is Brittany Bynum. My husband and I started a business back in twenty-twenty. We started home health and home care, and then in twenty-twenty-one, we started a staffing agency. In twenty-twenty-two, we now have a lab. The sign would allow us to promote all of the things that we offer right here in Maryville, from COVID tests to drug tests, to also hiring in C N As, um, nurses, L P Ns, audience. Um, our starting pay for the staff is twenty dollars all the way to one hundred dollars. We're able to staff right here in Maryville. We also have facilities in Northwest Indiana. Um, and we just now started doing nationwide placement of medical professionals.
Skyway Real Estate.
Any other discussion by the council? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you.
Skyway Real Estate, special expectation approval.
Special exception approval for Marvin's Wilson, owner, Skyway Real Estate, to allow a restaurant and bar and grill located at two thirty-four West Eighty-first Avenue in a C three highway commercial zone. Is Mr., um, Wilson here? Come on up, Mr. Wilson. Mr. Wilson and his attorney. Petitioner is requesting special exception from section twenty-one dash one thirty-six on point seven-five acres in a C three highway commercial zoning district to allow a dine-in, sports and bar and grill. The restaurant will serve barbecue ribs and jerk chicken. The two thousand, seven hundred and ninety-nine square feet space was previously used as a restaurant and mil- well-maintained, so it should not impede the surrounding neighbors. Petitioner has two other locations in Olympia Fields, Illinois, and Homewood, Illinois, that specialize in Caribbean-style cooking. Petitioner has obtained interior and exterior remodel permits. Petitioner is proposing an eight-hundred square foot fenced-in patio in the rear of the building. Parking is adequate for the site. There are eighty-four seats in the restaurant and bar area. Petitioner has obtained a liquor license. The hours of operation are eleven A M. to twelve midnight daily. There will be approximately six employees. Attorney, attorney has a copy of the lease agreement and the, uh, liquor license approval. Petitioner is aware of the camera ordinance, and this is for this petitioner only, at this location only, and for this use only.
Motion to approve, Mr. President, for discussion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pettit with a second by Mr. Hardaway for discussion purposes.
Mr. President, to the petitioner, uh, Mr. Wilson, what are the intents of the building immediately to the east? The old, uh, Napa Car Parts Store.
So that's owned by Abdul, and he's leasing the, um, he's leasing the restaurant from Abdul. But however, Abdul has, uh, conceptual plans as to what he's gonna do with that building. Councilman Pettit.
Okay.
What about the parking, Sheila? Did you mention the parking? Yes, the parking is adequate for the, for, for the, um, restaurant. Also, um, they have, um, did work in the parking lot. They have had, um, paving and sidewalks put in on the restaurant that they're, uh, proposing. Okay, thank you. Yes, ma'am.
What type of food will you serve?
Um, uh, thank you for that question. It is, um, Jamaican-style Caribbean-style, um, uh, cuisine. And, uh, Mr. Mr. Marvin's has, uh, three restaurants like this in Illinois, uh, that have proven to be very successful, and he's excited to be here in Maryville, Indiana. He's excited to bring this menu, which is not an offering that's currently available in Northwest Indiana. So, we're very excited to be here.
You bring any Snapples?
Mr. Mr. Marvin's is, uh, is, or Mr. Mr. Wilson is, uh, had, did not bring any samples. Uh, he's, he's, uh, making my job very hard this evening.
Any other discussion by the council?
If, if I may, one, one last comment.
Sure.
Uh, Mr. Wilson is here, but he is recovering. Um, he, he's, he's, uh, had a bout with COVID, and he's, he's a little short of breath. He's, he's not contagious. I don't wanna, uh, no worries about that, but he's, he's not, um, he's just not, his speaking voice, his public speaking voice is not here for us. Thank you.
Anything else from the council? Seeing no other comments, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, gentlemen. Trinity and I'll be in for some of those samples.
Brittany Bay, um, ver- wait. Brittany Bay, um, variants of L E D message. Brittany Bayum, variants of LED message sign.
So we're going to go to Father Ted. Petitioner and pastor.
We kind of had an order here. We're not doing it in order, but that's okay.
Okay.
Go ahead, Sheila.
I'm sorry, Brittany?
No, it's fine. Go ahead.
Okay. So you, we already did Brittany. So you tell me, Madam Chairperson, which one you'd like next?
Social expedition approval.
For?
Father Ted.
Okay. She's the boss. Special exception approval for Father Ted, pastor. The owner is the Diocese of Gary Holy Martyrs Catholic Parish. The purpose is to allow two additional, the two additions and four temporary modular classrooms to be located at 801 West 73rd Avenue in a R2 single-family residential zoning district. Petitioners requesting special exception approval from Section 21-136 on 17.78 acres in a R2 residential zoning district to allow two additions and temporary modular classrooms for a maximum of two years at the location. Holy Martyrs Catholic Parish, located at 801 West 73rd Avenue, would like to erect two additions. One addition would be 2,450 square feet, and the other would be 3,010 square feet. The two additions would allow for classrooms and offices. The current use would be expanded to accommodate the students and would not interfere with the neighboring properties. The fire department has reviewed the plans. Petitioner will sprinkle the building. The proposed use is the same as the current use. Access will be maintained from the existing stoplight from 73rd Avenue. Additional storm detention will be provided to accommodate the new hard surface. The parking is adequate and supports the addition. The proposed addition will conform to all town ordinance and state codes. It will complement the zoning district in which it is in, and is clearly a public necessity in that it will provide educational opportunities in the town growing population. For this petitioner only, at this location only. And the condition that was placed on it by the border zoning appeals is that the four temporary classrooms has a maximum of two years.
Mr. President, before any motions are made, get off my council. This is in Ward Three.
Absolutely, Councilman.
I want to make a motion. I want to make a motion. Second.
Open for discussion. Trinity?
Will these have air conditioning?
Of course they will. Does your school have air conditioning?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. President, as a side note, and as a loyal Aquinas parent, this is being funded by the Big Shoulders Program, correct? Father Ted, 1.6 million you're receiving from the Big Shoulders Program?
As was released, 1.25 million has been given by generous gift from the Dean and Barbara White Foundation to the Big Shoulders Fund, which is being the main impetus behind this project. Yes.
So for the record, we have a motion by Councilman Minchuck. And who did the second?
Right here. Mr. Lopez.
Mr. Tal has a question.
Yeah, two seconds.
Okay.
Mr. Tal has a question.
Sure.
How much is the tuition?
Did you bring your sales and marketing person?
We got to find the principal.
All fees and hook fees and technology fees, all of that is $2,155 a year, which for most worthless Indiana families is completely funded by the Indiana School Choice Scholarship.
Great question. Any other questions?
Yeah, I got, did they have that when you were, when your daughter was going shop?
What, the air conditioning or the? I don't know, Lisa. Do you remember that?
They should.
I'm just asking, because I had to pay for my grandson.
I have to pay for my grandkids.
It was well worth it.
Thank you, Mr. President.
It was.
Any other discussion from the council? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries, gentlemen. Thank you.
EFN Maryville Property LLC, special expedition approval.
So this is our last petition for this evening, special exception approval. The petitioner is SMG School of Healthcare, and the owner is EFN Maryville Properties. The purpose is a medical training school at 8585 Broadway on. This is our petitioner. Petitioners requesting special exception approval from Section 21-136 on 13.89 acres in a C5 office and research zoning district to allow a medical training school in a multi-tenant building. The school seeks to educate individuals 18 years or older to become a certified nurse assistant and eventually a nurse. This, this special exception will not impede the surrounding properties, and all the amenities are already included on the property. Sufficient parking is already present, over 600 parking spaces, Suite 508, which is approximately 2,035 square feet. The space is divided into five rooms. In the open area, there will be eight to 10 six-foot tables, two chairs at each table, instructor's desk, chalkboard, crash carts, vital machine stations, and a computer station big enough for six to eight computers. The second area, which is, which is the smaller patient rooms, there will be hospital beds, bedside tables, commode, nightstand, tall cabinets for demo medication, bed and grooming supplies, and medical mannequin dolls, one male, one female, one child, and one baby, one lion in each bed. The staff will consist of petitioner, Chantavia Meeks, and these are her credentials, ASBNSRN, MDSRAC, and CT, and the program director assistant. The hours of operation are 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Erin Cocklin, Director of the Education of the State of Indiana Board of Education, reviewed the business plan and gave her approval to start the program pending passing the inspection process. Petitioner has been in contact with Karen Bourne from Ivy Tech College regarding securing a testing site for students. Each student will have three attempts to successfully pass the entry and exit exam. The attorney has a copy of the letter of intent, and this is for this petitioner only, at this location only, and for this use only. Chantavia?
Good evening, everyone. It's nice to see you guys again. So with the SMG School of Healthcare, we will be providing students with the CNA QMA, and we've now added the LPN program, as is stated here, eventually nursing. So since our last meeting, we have since been able to start with adding the LPN, that is the Licensed Practical Nursing Program, to our school. So what we want to do with our school is to bring staff to the community because it is post-pandemic era. We have been short-staffed in the medical field, short-staffed in the nursing homes, short-staffed in the hospitals. I myself work the hospitals on the weekends, so I know firsthand how detrimental it is, not only for staff, for patients and family members as well. So with you guys' approval with the SMG School of Healthcare, I will be able to train CNAs, QMA's, and LPNs to get them out there in the workforce. As Ms. Shine has stated, I have been working with Ms. Erin Cocklin. She's the person who approves the programs pending our inspection process. And I've also been working with the representative of Patient Advocacy. She's also a representative who goes to Washington, D.C., for state funding. I have met with her and her boss in hopes of getting grants, financial aid, and scholarships for our school. I've also partnered with Work One since our last meeting, and Work One is working extensively with me so that we can have affordable tuition for our students. At the beginning of this meeting, I heard the lovely representatives explaining what they want in the community, and affordable education was one of them. SMG School of Healthcare backs that up 100%. Our CNA course is affordable, QMA is affordable, and our LPN is the largest LPN program in the state of Indiana right now. So I hope that we get the approval. I would love to work with the community and give back to the community, as this community has given on to me. So thank you.
Motion to approve. Second.
Second.
Second. Is there any other comments from the council?
Okay, for legalities. Who made the motion? Mr. Pettit. Second, Mr. White. Satisfactory with you?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion by the council? Seeing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Congratulations.
Thank you so much. I also like to thank the planning and building directors for today, Michael and Gwyneth, as they helped to prepare these reports. Thank you.
Is there any old business before us tonight? We have one new business item tonight. Execution approval, RE, Mesa Ridge Property Owners Association.
I make a motion to provide the town council president authority to execute a agreed order and pay almoanies. One mil, one thou, $1,350, $1,350 associated with the tax sale redemption. Of Mesa Bridge Outlaw, AKA Mesa Bridge Redemption Pond from the tax sale purchaser.
Way. Yeah, it's a private individual, right? And it is $1,350, so that you don't give the council president a heart attack.
Yeah, before we get a second, let's clarify the figure exactly. Mr. Pettit?
It's $1,350, authorizing the town council president. Mesa Ridge is actually in Ward Five. Rick represents Ward Five, but he has to execute the document in order to buy the retention pond off a tax sale. Is that correct?
Thank you. Is there a second under motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hardaway. We are in communication now with Stormwater Management to take over this retention pond from Mesa Ridge. The town would take care of it through Stormwater Management. And this has been a goal of mine to take over all of these retention ponds that the HOAs are dealing with all the time. It's just a very tough thing to do and keep track. And if they're not taken care of, there's drainage problems all over town. So it's important that the town take them over and maintain these properly. So I appreciate the council's consideration moving forward. Anything else? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, council.
Special presentation, participant certificate presentation. Daniel Martinez.
So as President Trinity announces your name, please come up and get your framed certificate we did for you guys.
Michael Wallace, the second. Leland Redd. Mariah Hayes. Rayel Morton. Terrence Barber. Brandon Rush. Gwyneth Felker.
You're going to ask me that one?
That's just mine.
Yassir. Prince Patel. Samira Downey. Amanda Hubbard. Hari Patel. Nasir Watkins. Nyla James. Herbert Campbell. Ezra Lopez. Me. Haley Carter. Jordan Triplet. Tyron Todd. Summer Wallace. Richard Augie. Malachi Whitlow. Christopher Stewart. Royce Edwards. Jaden Jenkins. That's all.
Did everyone get one?
Yes.
Oh, man, this is amazing.
Public comment. Please state your name and address for the record, and limit your comment to three minutes, please. Come to the podium. Jordan Triplet.
My name is Jordan Triplet, and I just wanted to express my appreciation for all the hard work the town has done at keeping the parks kept up and clean for our area.
Jaden Jenkins.
Do you need some help, Ms. Bunn?
My name is Jaden Jenkins. I was hoping to find how, um, hoping to find out how to go about getting the house next door to be cleaned up. No one lives there, and there's garbage in the yard.
So what is the address then, so we can look into that?
Um, oh, we'll find out.
Okay.
My name is Royce Edwards. I hear they are going to be building a new apartment, pun blocks. By me, would there be families with kids moving in, or is it gonna be a senior home?
There'll be, there'll be kids moving in.
My name is Christopher Stewart. Um, I do not have very many parks by me that I can play at. Are there any plans for the future that would, uh, provide a safe place to play with my friends? Maybe even a skate park?
President, I think that should come from the, uh, park director.
And what neighborhood do you live in, sir?
Um, I don't know.
Okay.
It's not on the paper.
What's your address?
I forgot it.
So any idea where you want that park to be put?
Um, near me.
This is typical of our open-to-the-public comments.
Our team will do the best to make every playground playable. A skate park will be discussed on later discussions. That is all.
Ray Leland.
My na- hello. My name is Leland Way, and I live in Ward Three. I have two dogs that I love to play with in my yard. I would like to know if there are any plans for a dog park that I can take my dog so they have more space to play.
Mr. Minchek, I will call on you to let us know about a dog park.
Yes, there is, and it, and it is coming.
Thank you.
And it's gonna be called Pawsville, located at Seventy-third Avenue and Broadway. And we will start construction in the next month or so, Jeff?
I'm sorry?
The next month or so, start construction?
No, it's gonna be a little bit late, but it's still happening.
Okay. So watch for Pawsville coming soon.
Is there any other public comment?
Madam President?
I'd like to recognize.
I'd like to recognize.
Vice President Judy Dunlap.
School Board Vice President Judy.
Dunlap.
Dylet. And.
School Board Member.
School Board Member.
Delena Thomas.
Delena Thomas.
Please come up to the podium.
I don't know if I should stand on this or not, but you got the tallest, y'all. Thank you. I was here, uh, two weeks ago discussing my yard about all the construction and debris. My yard is still not clean. Debris is everywhere. Um, now the grass is to my ankle. My dog is now very ill. I have a puppy, and she does not deserve to live the way she's living. Um, I just took her to the vet, and my bill is three hundred dollars. Every time I come, I'm gonna come every time until my yard is cleaned properly and my pool is done. I don't understand why I have to live like I'm in World War III in my backyard. I've been here since 2008. My yard has never, ever looked the way it's looking now. They were supposed to be there at one o'clock, they never showed up. I talked to them, they're supposed to be at three, never showed up. I have cameras everywhere, they come at five o'clock when they feel like coming. I'm not waiting at home, I have to work. So I need to know what's gonna go on, because I have a six-month-old puppy. She would like to run in my yard. I pay for the yard, I want her to run in it. Debris is everywhere. Every, it's just a World War III behind my home, and I am very disappointed in what's all going on with this construction. So, and, oh, her medications, everything she has to take right about now is horrible. I have pictures of my baby, her eyes are swollen, she had diarrhea, she can't see everything because of the grass. She has whatever's in the grass because it's so high. She's, I don't know what's going inside the grass. It is horrible, and she does not deserve to live the way she's living. She is a puppy. And if it was your child or your baby, would you wanna live like that? So here's all her medications, and I also have a picture of my baby and her eyes. And this happened, I'm tired of dealing with it, and if I have to, we'll get legal counsel. This is my baby's face.
Wow. Thanks.
So if you can stay after the meeting a little bit and talk to Ms. Sheila Shine a little more, and we'll see what else we can do for you and get on this contractor to clean up his mess.
Thank you.
And please state your name and address for the record.
Uh, my name is Natadodi. I live at eleven thirty-four West Seventy-second Court, um, in Turkey Creek.
Good evening, council. My name is Andrew Karas, six oh eight West Ninety-third Court, Crown Point, Indiana. Uh, first of all, I never knew your meetings to be so interesting and fun. Uh, I represent the citizens of the north side of Crown Point, uh, in Ross Township, Ninety-third to Hundred First Avenue in Crown Point. I'm sure, uh, we have some residents here today. But let me, let me tell you, the, uh, you have some serious competition, council people, from the students, so something to keep in mind. You guys did a great job. Uh, I'm sure your parents and your friends are very proud of you. Tonight, I come before you as a representative of HEPA seventy-eight. For those of you in the audience that are not, uh, familiar with the HEPA, we, our organization administers the senior citizen housing apartments that are located behind Dunkin' Donuts and, uh, off of US Thirty. We also have one, uh, right next to the Greek Church. Uh, and in conjunction with that, in, uh, in conjunction with, um, Holocaust Remembrance Month, our organization is hosting a documentary. It's called Life Will Smile. It will be this Saturday at two o'clock PM at the Helena Cultural Center, eight thousand Madison Street in Maryville. And this short documentary depicts the story of how the local citizens of a European community saved their entire Jewish population from being deported to concentration camps, probably something that all of you may have, uh, learned about recently. Uh, the producer is also coming from California to do a Q and A. It's open to the public, it's free, we'll have refreshments, so if you're, uh, you're not doing anything Saturday afternoon, uh, two PM, uh, please join us. And then also, while, I, I just wanna take a moment to thank the Maryville Council for your cooperation over the many years. I, I, I used to live in Maryville, we had a business in Maryville where Asparagus is now, it's called The Odyssey. And, uh, we go way back with, uh, with some of you, and I appreciate, uh, the, especially working with the border areas on Ninety-third Avenue on Broadway. Many of you may not know, but, uh, Maryville goes all the way to Hundred First east of Broadway, but not west of Broadway, and it's real confusing for people. Uh, they have a Crown Point address, though, where the Purdue Technology Center is, but, uh, you've always been very cooperative, and, uh, I thank you for, for that many years of, of cooperation and support. We, we work really well, our two communities, and that's how it should be in government. And that's a, a good example for all of you too, that, uh, you cannot get anything done without working with each other and, uh, and, and coming to common ground. Thank you for your time this evening. God bless you.
Brian Massarch, two oh one East Sixty-eighth Place. Um, I'd like to remind council that when we spin the rules, we should, on the second reading, read the full ordinance according to municipal code, um, which did not occur tonight. I, I hope in the future that we can adhere to that. Um, I, today went to the town website to see if I could pull a building permit, at least the application, of course, that's not there, but I was mildly surprised to see this grant application for homeowners who have experienced hardship. And my question is, when are you going to help and support people who have not faced hardship, who have paid their taxes, they're not, they don't owe, they're not in the rear, they don't need a loan? When are you gonna just help the regular person who owns their home? I, I, I just don't understand. Who is the gate, the gateway administrator or the, um, the grant administrator? That was not made very clear. We should be able to know who's saying yes or no, don't you think? Wouldn't that be fair?
Public comment, we will respond. Public comment. I'll talk to you after the meeting.
Thank you, sir. Um, finally, there's been, um, I'm gonna try and put this in mild terms. Uh, at our Pierce, uh, school, we've had a couple of incidences, incidents on Friday and on Monday and a few weeks ago, and these are very troubling things. And what I want to find out is what we can do to inform town members, what's going on at the schools. People who, and parents are going crazy and panicking because they don't know what's going on, they don't know what the progress is. Are we finding the people who are creating these incidents, creating this fear? Where can we go to get some information on, on that matter?
Again, it's not a Q and A, Brian, we'll talk to you afterwards. It's just for comment, public comment, not questions or answers, if you don't mind.
Okay, I think then my public comment is, is the town of Maryville and the Maryville School Board could do a lot better in transparency, information, communication. It's kinda tiring when you go to get questions answered, and you have questions, and you're trying to help other people understand things, and you get the, the no answers, the blank stares. Four weeks ago, I was here talking about TIF zones. I had TIF zone questions. I am still waiting for answers on the TIF zone questions.
Didn't you have a meeting here with Pat Riordan?
Yes, um, Mr. Riordan had. Well, he had trouble, he didn't even know who was on the committee, so that was the first question, that was kinda troubled me, he couldn't answer.
Brian, as Mr. Hardaway said, if you wanna talk to me, I've been president of the RDC for seventeen years. If you wanna talk after the meeting, I'll be more than happy to give you half an hour, okay?
Perfect.
It's three minutes, you know it's three minutes. This is a special meeting for these kids to understand government. We've got time. You've got my phone number, you and I have talked many times.
You know, that's the kinda attitude right there, Mr. President, that's the attitude. That's what upsets residents.
Good evening. My name is Alex Dunlap III. I live at twenty-four eighty-one West Eighty-fifth Lane. Um, the reason I got up tonight is because I think this is the night to celebrate the young folks. Um, I've had the, I've had the pleasure of living in, uh, New Orleans, Atlanta, California, and the work that I'm seeing done in Maryville is unparalleled. I, I see the work being done here. I commend the council, I commend the school board, I commend the residents, and I definitely commend the young people tonight. Continue to do what you do, 'cause we see our future. Once people look out and say we're as bleak as dim, no, when we look at you tonight, we see that our future is bright. This isn't, this is not the night for us to poo-poo on what you did tonight. It's just not. All right, so with that, I also wanna just introduce myself. I've, I've been a resident, uh, Maryville. I actually own Around the Clock Ambulance, which is located on, uh, Fifty-seventh and Broadway. Uh, so I would, uh, uh, definitely, and then everything that we heard tonight is just, how can you not celebrate that? Uh, so with that, young people, we look, oh, I got a job for you too one day, all right?
My name is Retanya Almer. I live at twenty-seven thirteen West Sixty-fifth Avenue in Ennsbrook. Um, we came here a couple of weeks ago, and we were inquiring about the pond that's behind our homes. And we were told that possibly we can get an answer today on what's going to go on with that pond, because what we have heard was, is that they are going to clean up some apartments down the street and dump that debris in our pond. The residents in that area do not want that. In that pond, we enjoy that pond because it's right in our backyard, so our backyards are not that big. The pond is, it has its problems, but it's more clear than it's not. And the, and the thing I think I'm just so concerned about, there's a lot of wildlife in that pond. There's actually a swimming turtle in that pond about this big. He had to be living there over twenty years. So you're telling us you're just gonna come and dump debris on there and kill him? There's rabbits that come over there and have their children there, and they leave. There's this little baby fox that comes over there and drink out of the pond and leave. We, the residents, enjoy that pond, and we just kinda wanna know what's going to go on with it. One of the reasons I bought my home was the fact that it had a pond in the back. Now, if you're just gonna dump the debris in there and then you're gonna put, um, thod and dirt over it, that's not going to stop the toxins that's gonna come out of there. Years from now, we're gonna get sick from that. You don't know what's gonna happen when you dump debris from one area and put it in the area where we are. So I'm just here 'cause I want to know what's gonna go on with the pond. And look, if, from what I understand, Maryville has decided they're not going to do anything about the pond, that's fine, but at least let the residents. We can do something about it. We can write our own grant. We can, uh, appeal to the government and get a grant to clean the pond. At least give us an opportunity to do that before you just destroy something that the residents really enjoy. So I just kinda wanna know what's going on with the pond.
I can sort of, correct, let's step for you after the meeting. I think there's a lot of misinformation there.
Okay.
So we like it natural, so it's not our pond, it's your pond, however you like it. So we'll talk to you after the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Ben King. I'm at twenty-seven forty-seven West Sixty-fifth Avenue, uh, Ward One, Precinct Twenty-two. And I could piggyback on what she, uh, just said, but I won't. I live right, couple of doors down from her. I agree with everything she just spoke on. Now, I wanna also elaborate on, um, the traffic situation. We talked about this two weeks ago, and we were looking forward to a call from a gentleman that gave us his card. Uh, he's here today, uh, he knows who we're speaking of, and I wanna know, what are we gonna do about the situation? And I wanna know, what are we gonna do about the situation? We had, almost had a near accident right in front of my house yesterday. Two elderly ladies from out of town were looking for our address on the next street and they were a little confused. And as she was turning into my driveway to ask me for any directions, a car came speeding around the corner between the two, two cars on one side, three or four cars on the other side of the street. The street's too narrow to have parking on both sides of the street. This is supposed to be looked at. Uh, ordinance, uh, at least I was told, we were told last, uh, meeting, that they want to check the ordinance, pass it on to the council and then also to the, uh, police department. Uh, I don't know if any of that's been done, if they've even thought about looking at the ordinance. We need information. We were supposed to get a sign up and posted about the, uh, situation with the traffic. Uh, it was brought to our attention that it's a possibility. There's been nothing approved yet, understanding that. But it is a possibility that they'll make a sign or get a sign prepared once they go through the ordinance, check the ordinance and so forth. And the sign could possibly be saying, uh, parking will be restricted on one side of the street. That would probably make it a lot better and not on the other side. At least people come around that curve, there's three curves right in that area and cars being parked on both sides. You, you lose your visual. So we're very concerned about that. I've been there for twenty years.
Finish up, sir. Thank you. Go ahead, finish up.
Okay, thank you. And, uh, I'm just overly concerned because now, uh, we've had more homes built back there. The traffic is faster and we just need some help in that area.
We'll talk.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comment?
Hello, Delena Thomas, um, school board member. Um, again, I just wanna again thank, uh, Ms. Bonin and Councilman Hardaway for starting this idea and getting it, getting our kids involved, especially with, um, starting them young and being involved in the community. I wanna thank, um, President Bella and all the, uh, council members and the whole team here in this room for taking the time to work with our students and having them come here tonight. It's, uh, me being a new school board member, I know it's hard getting in front of people and talking. So I can understand the nerves that the kids have, but they did an excellent job here tonight. So I just wanna remember. And again, I hope we can continue to do this year after year. And this is a memory that the, these kids are gonna have for the rest of their life. So again, I just wanna thank you and thank the parents for coming out, letting them be a part of this. We appreciate all y'all's support that y'all give to us here at the Maryville School System. So please continue to support the kids. Please continue to come out, um, volunteer, be a part of our PTO. We have a Girls on the Run event. I just wanna say, next Saturday, the MIS, um, the girls are gonna be running a 5K. Pray for me, I'm running too, so. So just continue just to be involved with our students. They worked very hard tonight. Again, y'all did an excellent job. I'm very proud of all of you. Have a good night. Thank you.
Land Commission Meeting, May 17th at 6:30 PM. RDC Meeting, May 24th at 6 o'clock PM. May Town Ca- um, Town Council Meeting, May 24th at 6:30 PM.
Motion to adjourn.
Madam President. Madam President. Motion to adjourn.
All in favor, say aye.
Happy day.